We're all set? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, with the hour being after seven, after we just got out of our explanation on the new system for viewing, any plans online, building inspectors will now open the hearing. And we have, the hour being after 7:15. We have a continued public hearing for 1429. We have a site plan and also a special permit. That being said, the meeting's open and Mr. Albern.
Mr. Chairman.
How would you like to do this?
So I think we just have to discuss the procedural. I think if we remember last time, we were discussing whether the special permit modification should be before the planning board or the zoning board of appeals. It was my opinion that since the site plan and special permit go together, and it was originally granted by the planning board, it should be in front of the planning board. I had a conversation with the building commissioner who determined otherwise, and he thought that this, that the modification to the special permit should be in front of the zoning board of appeals. So that's what we will do. We will file an application in front of the zoning board of appeals to get a modification to the special permit. Before you still is a modification to the site plan approval, which has not changed, and we don't really have anything to present as far as substance goes tonight, but the next step will be filing an application for definitive subdivision approval. And basically, my, I guess my, my, my ask would be that we file a definitive subdivision approval in the next couple of weeks, probably sooner than a couple of weeks, and we will be in front of you for the modification of the site plan and the definitive subdivision at the same time while we're doing the modification to the special permit. Does that all make sense?
Yeah, except for one thing. I don't know how you withdraw something that shouldn't have been in front of us, but for the special permit, it's still kind of hanging out there, right?
Yeah, we can withdraw it.
Okay.
We'll just withdraw it.
You withdraw it, it doesn't matter with prejudice or not, but however you want to work.
Yeah, without prejudice.
Okay. Make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the special permit without prejudice due to the fact that it shouldn't have been here in the first, I guess?
Yeah, it's a move back.
Okay. All right. I know you wanted to do it for the bank and stuff, but I just want to make, get that. I have a formal motion to have a second discussion. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, as far as timing, you're going to file, I heard what you're going to do, and I don't know how long it's take to get the special permit for the hearing for the zoning board.
Yeah, I think we could do, put a definitive subdivision put together pretty quickly, right?
Yeah, we already, we already filed it.
I have a definitive subdivision, so we'll just, I've had some comments.
All right, I'll be, I'm going to be a nice guy to you, Chris, is I don't think you want to close our hearing until you get the final from the ZBA.
That's totally fine, yeah, I mean.
You understand why, right?
I totally do, yeah, so it's fine.
Because all, you know, if they, all they moved out is one inch.
Right.
Then everything goes away.
Then everything, I would like to do all three simultaneously.
Yeah.
At the best we can. Yeah, that's, that would be my proposal, yeah.
Okay, and can you give us, well, we're going to need an extension, so when do you think you'll have it all together through the zoning?
Yeah, I'm happy to give whatever extension you want, but I would hope that we can file the zoning board of appeals application, the definitive subdivision plan within the next two or three weeks, let's say, three weeks.
Okay, so extension through the end of April?
Yeah, of course.
And when would you want to continue the site plan review?
Yeah, but maybe mid-April, if that makes sense.
I think I overstepped. You already, you already filed the subdivision plan?
No, we haven't, so that's something else we have to do, yeah.
Okay. So why don't we just figure, because you got timing steps for that.
Right.
When would the subdivision be rolling in?
I would say in the next two, three weeks, yeah.
All right, and then it takes about two, two weeks forever, three weeks, right?
Yeah, almost four.
So you're talking, yeah, so you're talking at least two months, if that makes sense.
Yeah, if you have a meeting in end of April, maybe, if that makes sense.
Yeah, we can continue it, and if you get to that point and it's not advertised right, because we get the problem with the papers, the advertising, it used to be easier on a Thursday, Wednesday, and they go home on Mondays or something. All right.
21st.
All right, okay, can we have an extension for?
Of course.
Up through the end of April 30th?
Yep, that makes sense.
And make that a formal motion?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Post.
One other thing was, we already did submit a definitive subdivision plan. If you remember, I was kind of caught off guard because I didn't realize it was the applicant's duty to do the advertising. You know, I have my own reasons for that, because I believe that it's the town's requirement. Irregardless, we're happy to do the advertising ourselves. I would just ask graciously if the, if the filing fee could be, be waived, since we've already paid for a subdivision, definitive subdivision plan application. Yeah, we have. It was withdrawn the first time around, so we're just looking to get a waive of the filing fee, since we already paid it, and it's going to be the savings.
It's not on the agenda, if you want to bring it up. What we typically do is hold checks.
Okay.
All right, I don't want to go outside the open meeting laws, because you're going a little bit off.
Yeah, I did, I did submit a letter back in July, but that's fine.
Hey, so what can happen is you can put everything you're supposed to have with us, and then we just won't cash it like we've done the past, until it decisions.
But I still did the ad, you have to notice the letter.
Right, I got that, yeah, I got it this time.
Well, I reread everything in Mass Journal Law, and I know why they did it, because if they allowed you to do it, you'd only send it to one person as opposed to all of them.
Yeah.
Not you specifically, but that's what happened. But by, the town has said, if we had it certified, and you're going to give us the cards, then you, we all know it's gone to the right people.
Right, right.
So we did a little bit.
You know, again, I'm going to do it, but, you know, it doesn't matter, I just, you know, whatever.
The next question on this line of thing, when you submit the subdivision plan, is 429 going to be part of it?
Is 429 going to be part of it?
The reason I ask is you'd have to do a, what do you call it, A and R, then?
I think we would just come in with a definitive subdivision plan.
Which would show the diff, which would, 429 would be part of it?
Correct.
All right, so you're going to, you're not going to segregate that off early, then?
Correct.
Okay, so, right, John, you're all set with that, right?
Yeah, I think that's a cleaner way to do it. I know what you're saying about the A and R, but then it gets.
No, no, I understand, you got to hold it out here, and then you do it the same night. No, that's, if, that's.
Do everything I want.
I just want to make sure, because if we have a subdivision plan, I want to make sure you're on the same play, page, and we didn't have an A and R 1429, we couldn't do much with your A and Rs.
Right, I got you.
Okay. What's the date?
April 21st.
Okay, and make a motion to, to extend, continue to April 17th? No, what was it?
April 21st.
April 21st at 7:15, okay? So, we'll see you then.
Thank you.
You don't have to do a motion, but it's.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We'll see you soon.
Wow, that was quick.
Can I ask a question?
No.
That was just the site plan, right?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, site plan is dismissed.
No, the special.
I mean, the site plan is still there, and the special permit's gone away.
So I, for the next hearing, I watched the tape, and I read the minutes, and I filled out the form, and I don't have it with me.
For which, this one?
For Ironwood.
Oh, oh, we have it.
Can I go see if I can patent print the form? I have the form completed.
Oh, yeah.
So this is when it's older. Okay.
Yeah, we don't file it with.
Okay.
Charlie Parker, yeah, he does, he has enough to do. All right, wow. On time. Who could be, we had to sit in this room. Maybe we should talk about meeting notes. Maybe, finance committee's got it going on.
It looks like you're testifying before us.
It also looks like you have no friends either.
Well, you know that.
And when do you sit with him? He's lonely.
Come on up there. Either one.
That might be saying something. We'll find out next Friday at the front of St. Patrick's, if friends or not.
Okay, with the hour being after 7:20, we have a continued public hearing for Ironwood, 455 South Street, and at the last meeting, the discussion came over turnarounds for the fire department.
Yes.
And, oops.
So basically, you also gave us a little bit of homework. When we left out of here, we owed the fire department, we owed your board something from the fire department approving the plan. Sarah made several comments to edits on the plan, and we had to discuss a few things with Carl, and we also said we would resubmit the financial surety and the notification ever source, all of which was done in February 24th, and I have extra copies if they didn't make it into this room. I'm sure you're going to read comments, so I will let Carl's letter and Deputy Chief Barry's letter speak for themselves, but I would submit that we also submitted a draft decision, and the really only reason I'm bringing that up right now is part of the discussion with Carl to get to his, I think, cleanest comment letter ever, was that we would put four special conditions in, all of which are in fact in there, should you get to that point. And so, at this point, if you have the comment letters, I'd ask that you read them in from fire and engineering, and we will answer any questions you have.
Okay. Paul always does it bold, now I know how he does it. From Deputy Chief Paul Barry, received the 24th, on February 22nd, the applicant provided the WAPL fire department with C M R 1.00, Mass chooses comprehensive fires, safety code, required turn radius document via email, we find the access road acceptable for the proposed site and proposed use. So that's a done deal, and let me just see what's stapled to it, might be the previous, now, everything else was, we had talked about last time. And from Carl, he must have went to law school, because he tells everything you guys submitted.
Makes it look longer.
Ching, 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 and the recent submission addresses all his items in his prior reviews, he has no further comments. So that's the only two new things we have, and what he asked, and I think Carl had some of these on here, I think everybody has a copy, I assume. Everybody have a copy in their folder? Okay. The special conditions were that the plan set shall be updated to show the, adjust the location for the label for drainage, design point S N 002, and relabeled settling basins as infiltration basins, that was the call. The engineering department shall witness the soil testing infiltration prior to construction. The plan set shall include a stamped registered land surveyor to be filed with the town clerk prior to construction, or prior to filing the A and R plan, which was earlier, and all sheets in the plan set shall be updated to reflect the change in orientation of the gravel drive as shown on sheet C 1.07 as requested by the fire department. So those are Paul Barry's and Carl's comments on special conditions. I don't know of any that we, other than got corrected. John, do you have it, do you recall any more than just what was there? That you had, or are you all set, I guess? No, no special conditions to add, or questions or comments, okay. I'll do it as all as, any questions, comments, or special conditions, Kate?
No.
Okay, Phil?
I just have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So one is on sheet 1.07, you, you added the fire turnaround. Yep, we did. But I noted you didn't change sheets 1.03, 4, and 5.
We have not, and that was per the direction from this board to leave it as is.
Okay.
And submit the fire, and then assuming fire, because the last, we hadn't, we had talked to them, but I didn't have written proof that they were acceptable.
Yeah.
And so the intention, and that's what special condition four is for, is prior to endorsement, you will see everything updated to that sheet.
Oh, okay, 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 just want to make sure.
But we, we were trying not to.
Change.
Muddy the waters with everybody other than the fire department.
Okay.
So you will see one set of plans, and they'll all have the turnaround.
Okay, good. And, and it looks like the, you know, you're not able to get the, the final acceptance from EverSource, but you have, they're working on it.
Yes, and we submitted the request in papers, so you have it for your files.
Yeah.
That's the best we can do.
Now, just out of curiosity, if they don't accept it, you know, at the end, what, I mean, obviously, the project doesn't go forward.
We'd be very sad.
Project doesn't go forward.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a, yeah.
We're at their whim. If they say no, then Harwood Engineering's going to go look for another buyer for back land.
Yeah, 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 no, I just, yeah.
Across the, right next to them.
Most likely.
Yeah. But it's good you got everything else resolved, and I think all the other things that were on the fire, the deputy fire chief's memo were taken care of. We talked about most of those last meeting.
Right, and most of those are going to be through the, we actually need a permit from them as part of the building permit process, so.
Yeah, okay.
That was a nice heads up.
Yeah.
And we know we're discussing things more with them.
Did the circle result in approval of any of the arrays?
No.
Oh.
So?
Yeah, so I have on my list revised all the sheets prior to endorsement, that's been covered. So the deputy chief was okay with the unpaved?
Yes.
Turnaround, okay.
We specifically discussed that.
Okay.
Because in other projects I've had.
Right, he has not been, okay, okay.
His basic concept, so that we're not wondering, is there's no one there.
Yeah.
If there was a house, if there was an office, we would be paving a lot more, but is effectively, there's no one there, and even just the trips we've talked about, it's a couple of trucks every month, two months.
Yeah.
The gravel isn't even going to be disturbed by birds or deer or something, so he was, he was fine with it, and when we do construct, he and Carl will make sure that it can support his trucks.
Okay, okay. And then regarding the locust map on the cover sheet, can that be adjusted to be more informational to show, I mean, the idea is to show basically where it is, and what it is now is, I don't, I don't know what this is, but this is not very helpful.
It's the, it's the USGS mapping.
Okay, but do you know, do you know what I'm asking? So can you adjust the scale so we can actually see some?
I had the scale adjusted, but then you guys needed it to be one inch equals 200.
Well, okay, yeah, then there's another sheet, this one on sheet 100, equally unhelpful. That's at one inch equals half a mile. So, you know, this one.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's, it's helpful to kind of orient yourself, like, okay, it's on South Street, but South Street and what, you know, so if you can.
So would you be willing to waive the 1 to 200, and we will make sure we get an actual intersection?
I would, if it's, if it's okay.
So I did originally have that, it was one inch equals, I think, 1,000, and it panned out, and it was easier to see the whole neighborhood, and that's Carl pushed back on that.
Oh, really? Okay, well, I don't know, maybe I'll hear from my other board members, but to me, I like to be able to see, okay, so there's a project on South Street, okay, where is it, you know, and I don't really get that from either of these maps.
No, I, I agree with you.
Okay.
We're trying to meet the book.
Yeah.
If you guys will waive it, we will change the picture.
Okay.
I don't have any problems with it.
Or if you can keep this one and, and fix the other one, maybe, or can you add that one also, or something?
I could even provide an 11 by 17, or eight and a half by 11, that gave you a little bit more zoomed out, so kind of met Carl's and then had another one.
Yeah, if he's insistent, I don't want to go against that, so if he's insistent, it should be there, but, but maybe you can add another one.
Just add a sheet, right?
Fine.
Or even just fix the one that's on 100.
You have room?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, like, take.
What scale would you like it to be?
A useful scale, I don't know, I guess, I'll let you determine what that is.
I know it's not super useful on the smaller scales.
Just add another sheet at the standard, what is it, 200? Or what, what do we require?
So the one inch equals 200 is on the front.
And that's where it goes.
Then blow it up a little, 140?
I could do like one inch equals 1,000, which it was before, it zoomed out a little bit.
Okay, whatever, whatever you can, you pick it, whatever fits.
Sure.
Okay, that works the best, if it's, if it can, it might be at 925, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Just fit it to the page.
I can do that.
That'd be great, thank you.
So we're going to add sheet for locusts at proper scale. Okay, anything?
Okay, and I know you don't have much paving, but have you shown the snow removal locations where you're going to snow, store snow?
I talked about it with Carl. There's no real plan for snow storage, because I, the road will be plowed, it'll just go on either side of the road. There's, there's no real need to push it all in one location, or not push it all in one location, and we are not removing any snow on the panels or in the array.
Is there space? Because isn't there a fence right along?
So in between the fence and the array in that area, we're talking like 50 to 40 feet. There's a swell on.
Between the, the array and the fence, but then that also covers the road.
No, so there's a swell on one side of the fence. On the southern side of the fence, you can see the swell, which snow could be pushed into that pretty easily, and then also the panels sit three to four feet off the ground, snow could be pushed up under there. I, I think there's plenty of room for snow on the site. It can also be pushed into the infiltration basins and stuff like that, where it can melt and do its, I'm not, Carl and I weren't super concerned with snow storage.
Add a note, per our condition.
Yeah.
Just especially because it's in water resource protection area three. I'd appreciate it, thank you. And then I believe in a previous meeting, you said there's going to be no chemicals.
Correct.
Or anything, is that noted on the plans, or could it be?
It's noted on the plans and noted in the, in all the drainage reports.
Okay.
There's a pretty solid drainage report that has a secondary spill containment plan, and even gives you the material data sheets for what's in the transformers.
Okay. Do you, do you, can you give me which sheet it's on, just?
I don't have that off the top of my head, it's in that, like, 300-page drainage report.
No, I mean, on, on the plan set.
Yeah, if you look at the plan set on the last page, C 2-03, that's the secondary containment in there.
Okay, so it should be there.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's just filled with a F R 3 fluid, which is kind of like vegetable oil, pretty much.
Okay, okay, and do you have a landscaping plan in here?
We.
No, as part of the conditions that you submitted, you said everything will be according to the landscaping plan.
I think we have a landscaping plan, because we didn't have, we're not proposing any landscaping.
Do you care to talk, talk to?
Sure, so I think that.
I think the approach for the management of the vegetation under the panels is to replant with a native pollinator seed mix, and so post-grading, that's primarily the approach with the landscaping, is establishment of native meadow vegetation underneath the panels. Usually, when it comes to sort of a landscaping plan for under the panels, it's pretty straightforward, and given the amount of vegetation that will remain between South Street and the panels themselves that will screen visibility, we don't really need to plant, or we don't propose any woody species associated with the project.
Yeah, I mean, I think you've mentioned something similar before, but it would be good to have something on the plans, you know, to that effect.
Can you add a note?
I can add a note, but there's also the clearing plan, which shows what we're taking out, and also the, the plant seed mixes on the plan as well.
Okay.
Is there, are there notes on the phasing? Maybe we could include a note on the, on sort of that phased map?
Okay.
Yeah, so the seed mix is on page C 2.00. And then the clearing plan is C-1.02. And it shows you the areas that we're going to remove vegetation.
Okay.
But effectively, it will look like a field.
Okay, yeah, I, I get the intent, and that's fine, it's just, you know, typically, there's an actual plan that says landscape plan with information on, you know, what's your plan, and that makes the, conditions make sense. Okay, I'll, I'll take a look at that. And then my, my last question is on that earth removal, so it's noted on the plan, 65,000 cubic yards, and it, it looks like, you know, if you, if you average that out, it's something like 1.8 feet over the site, I mean, it's, it's not insignificant, so have you, have you guys?
And it has been addressed as a condition of the land disturbance permit.
Okay.
They've scheduled it out in there, it's condition 43 of that permit.
Of, of here?
Of the land disturbance permit.
Okay, okay, so that's, that's been looked at by conservation?
Yes.
Okay.
There's also a lot of other notes on C-2.03, off-site earth removal notes.
Yeah, I, I see it's all there, but that goes, this amount, in my eyes, goes beyond, you know, like that what is, you know, generally allowed for a non-residential use.
Well, I would disagree with that.
Okay.
This is the bare minimum we can do to have a functioning solar array. We would like to double or triple it, but we know that that's not really the intent.
Yeah.
And so we have, we have minimized everything, yes.
To make money off of gravel?
Gee, I wonder.
What a great idea.
And if you do minimize it to what is required, the bylaw actually says it is part of the, part and parcel of that. It is a lot, but, I mean, we're covering acres with the solar fields.
Right.
Still a significant hump in the middle of this array.
So that's where it mostly comes from.
Yeah, I remember, it's all in one phase, most of it's in one phase, I forget which number phase.
So if you go to the phasing plan, it's phase two.
Phase two, yeah.
And it's mostly that, all that material is kind of, right now, currently, there's a big hill in the middle of the site, and phase two would just kind of take that hill out, but you'll still have an arcing grade of the site.
We would prefer it to be flat, but.
Yeah.
We're trying to work with the spirit and intent of the bylaw.
Okay, 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 great, all right, those are my questions, thank you.
Okay, I got a couple. It's, it, my assumption, Phil, is you're not going to do the A and R until EverSource says okay, right?
Correct.
So this is just going to sit there?
Most likely, yes.
Okay, and would, we have a two-year timeframe of which to, or then it goes away?
I'm, I'm hoping I don't have to extend.
Yeah, okay, so I just, that's why I just want to make sure, is that's, that's the approach.
This is going to sit on the shelf for a while, I suspect.
Yeah, so we may not see you for a long time.
Correct.
Okay, all right, that was the, and that was actually my only question, aside from the other ones that were already answered, so, all right, and.
Is there an issue with EverSource, or are they just slow?
They're just slow, yeah.
Because we saw this up off West Street.
Yes, it's, it's like trying to get a telephone pole that they're paying for. If you're paying for it, they'll be there next day, they got to do it. I think it was two years for my house, that's just all, we don't think there'll be a problem, but.
Okay.
Famous last words.
Told you, 30-pack works.
What group would the gravel construction?
We haven't figured that out. It'll be part of the construction management plan that we work out with the building department.
Okay.
We don't have a buyer for it, or an excavator, or a contractor, so I can't give you a good answer right now, Jim.
It may not travel very far, right?
May not. It may be very short.
Not go on any roads at all, perhaps?
Well, eventually it'll go off.
Yeah, when he takes it somewhere else.
Yeah, he sits it out to a sand and stone and all that. Okay, all right, so with that being, I got nothing else, so I'll go through the special conditions before we close it, just so in case there's an issue. Special condition one, the plan set shall be updated to show location of the label for the drainage design point SN zero zero two and relabel the settling basins as infiltration basins. Condition two, as the engineering department show witness soil testing in the infiltration basin prior to construction. Three, the plan set shall be updated to include a stamp planned by mass registered land surveyor to be filed with the town clerk prior to construction or filing an A and R plan, which I assume is going to be on the A and R anyway.
Yes.
Yeah, because you're not starting anything until you get that.
Right.
That is a question, you could do this while I'm A and R, correct?
Hmm?
Okay. All sheets in the plan set shall be updated reflect the change in orientation of the gravel drivers shown on sheet C one oh seven, requested by the fire department. Five, you're going to add a sheet for a locust plan at the proper scale that allows it to be easily read. And six, a note to be added to the plan to show the snow storage area. So those are the six conditions, I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second?
And a second, Phil, any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed abstain, okay, you got five zero zero. So I'll make a motion to close the hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, make a motion to approve case number twenty-one dash zero four for the parts at Solar. The applicant, Howard Engineering, is, is the address, I mean, as the owner and. Based upon our standard conditions, which are always there, except what we take out, we don't need, and the special conditions which we just voted. So I make that in the form of a motion for approval, do I have a second?
Second.
A second, any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained.
Thank you very much.
I assume you're under the.
Thank you very much.
He works for the town. It's gonna snow.
Just wait till you see our new system.
It's gonna snow.
It's gonna be so great.
I hope so.
Well, I already said something that, you know, the plans, we have fourteen days and they just, a lot of times, so it isn't going to help people on the zoning, looking for the zoning unless they get them. You know, in maybe fourteen day rule or something before they could, because they just, a lot of times they just drop them. That's, and that's tough on anybody who can't make it. Night, Phil.
All righty, thank you very much.
They going back to Louisiana?
Uh, one of them, I think the others are going to Maine. It's a, it's a scatter.
Yep. Okay, now, uh, in the minutes, I'll make a motion to approve the February seventeenth. Do I have a second? The motion for February seventeenth approval?
Second.
Okay, second, any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. And, okay, and the last item on there is master plan update. Remember?
I can start that?
Sure.
So the, we're, we're past the, getting all the, the input, the comments, and I can't remember, I think I updated you on the vision, we had a meeting where we reviewed the visioning and the goals. That the Barrett Planning Group has, has produced. So they took all of the, the comments from, all the input from all the public hearings, from the surveys, and from that, they gleaned out, they, they created a, a list of goals and visions. And, and, yeah, I want to say that's a very difficult task to take all those, those comments and really come up with something, and I think they did a good job doing it. I think members of the board, having been in a lot of those hearings, we could, you know, we, we heard the same thing, so. So that's still in draft and, and there will be some more, more review of that. The big thing that, that is happening next is the, Barrett is, is creating the findings, the, the, everything they've heard and they're producing a report. And it'll, it'll cover the ten elements that go into the master plan. So our committee has organized among, around, in six working groups that cover those ten areas. And each of those, those work groups has assigned one or two of those elements. And their responsibility will be to review the, the findings document when it comes out, it still hasn't come out, but it's imminent, to review it. And the reason for having appointed committee members to, to review one element is to ensure that we're giving due diligence to each one and, and the review is to make, it's a review for accuracy. Now, this is them taking all the information they gathered from, from both talking to town officials, getting demographic data, census data, you know, understanding the town. So they're, they're giving us that back and, and our goal now is, our role is to make sure it's accurate. So, so these work groups will do that, they're, the other thing, the other purpose of the work groups is that it would not be in the interest of, of the efficiency of the process to have every committee member send all their comments to Barrett, because that, they have, you know, they, they have other things they're working on. So all the comments will go to one person in the work group or one work group and then they will consolidate them. And there's a form that, that will be filled out, all comments will go forward to Barrett and then on this form, they will respond to how they found, how they acted on it. And the work group meetings will be public, so they will be, they will be following open meeting law. And even if a committee, a, the master plan steering committee member is assigned to one topic, one element, we're, we want everyone to look at all the elements. So it's not to exclude anyone, it's just to make sure that they're giving first focus to the one area. And the areas that were given or the elements that were given to members of the committee were based on the organization, the town organization or town board that they represented, or their own expertise or own area of interest. So we, so we tried to match them up that that would make sense. But again, every committee member is invited to review all elements and to give all the comments and that's what those, those working groups will, will be doing. So, so we have a, on the next committee meeting for the, for the, the master plan steering committee is on March ninth. And at that meeting, we're going to be reviewing, you know, the current version, there's a new version of the vision. And where we will also be discussing the, the whole mechanics of the work groups, we're not looking for the work, work groups to complete their, their work yet, because there's not really enough time. But the big thing we're also doing at that meeting is, is we're just going to have a general discussion and. One of the members, the Barrett group has put together a list of questions, so it's, it's, it's an opportunity for us, the members, to, to do some introspection. You know, what are we looking for, what's important to, to wallpole, what would, what would be the, what would be success for us in the master plan? So, so it's a good discussion to bring us all together as, as members of the committee. So that's really going to be the, the main topic, but as I said, we'll be doing other things too, that, that agenda has not come out yet, but that will be coming out. So, so the, the next big milestone will be having a public hearing, it'll be on April twenty-seventh. And that's when we will be presenting with the Barrett group, planning group, the, 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 the vision and the, and also the, the findings. And that's for public comment, so then the public will have a chance to respond to that and, and that's, that's really the next milestone. The, after that will be, a draft action plan will be due on July eighth and a draft master plan will be due on August thirty-first. And those are due to the committee and there, there are, after the master plan, actions are, have been reviewed by the committee and, and reviewed. Then there will be a public hearing on September fifteenth or thereabouts for, for public comments. So I just want to thank, you know, the committee members, I think everyone's, you know, really doing a good job. I think the Barrett Planning Group, I think they, they do bring a wealth of knowledge and experience and I think we're benefiting from that. I want to thank, you know, Katie as, as, as vice chair. And, you know, we're always looking for more, more public input, so the next, the next time for that will be responding to the, you know, to the, the findings document. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, or Katie, do you want to add anything?
No, I just honestly clarify for me because, and I don't want to keep everyone here, so. We had a meeting, a couple of meetings back, and I was the lone vote against discussion. So there was a meeting proposed where we would come up with our, would meet as a group and the committee would talk about what they wanted personally to get out of this. And I opposed that because I personally feel it doesn't matter what we want to get out of it. We're there to make sure that the town as a whole is represented and that the vision of the town, not our visions, are represented. And that if we wanted to voice our opinions, we should have done it at the public meeting and participated in one of the groups or we should have filled out the surveys. So that was my own personal opinion and I was all by myself on that one, which is fine. But when, and I'm asking this more as clarification, Phil, so when you just described that part of the next meeting, I took that a little differently with your description here. I don't want to put words in your mouth, so it sounded like we weren't doing that, so that's why.
We, we are, we are doing that, but I, we're, Daphne, who's on, you know, the Barrett group, she came up with a list of questions. And that seemed to be a good way to frame how to, how to get people to discuss things, so I actually.
But are we still discussing our own personal views or are we discussing what came in?
No, we're discussing personal views, it's just, but using those questions.
Okay.
And, and I don't, I don't have a list of questions, but, but.
Well, that's fine, I just, you said it, I took it as we were reviewing what came in, so that's why I was just asking if it had changed.
So, so it, no, it is. That is one thing we're doing at the meeting, but the primary thing at the meeting would be to, to do this introspection, to what are we, what are we looking to get out of it? And, and she has a nice list of questions that I thought really would be, you know, a good way for committee members to kind of, you know, talk about what's important for them. And also, you know, as we continue working together.
Is it those, is it that? That email? Have we seen the questions?
You have not seen the questions, those are not, those are not them, yeah. Yeah, no, there's a, there's a, you, you should have got, I assume you got it, I haven't, but it came out maybe yesterday.
Okay.
And, and she was suggesting that, there were some, if you, if you saw the, the notes going back.
I did, there was a lot of emails going back.
There was some. Yeah, yeah, so, so I was looking to make sure that we didn't have this meeting to talk about what people's vision were and make sure we really had, people had a lot to say. Because people did talk a little bit about the vision when we did the, the meeting on the, the readout of the vision statements. So Daphne came up with this list of questions, which I thought was very good to, to really, you know, frame what people should be thinking about. And I thought that was very valuable, so, yeah, so that's what it is. And, and I don't think the intention is so much to, to, for people to say, this is what we want to see and we're gonna, we're holding to it. It's as much as just so people have a chance as we work together as a committee to know where people are coming from and kind of what's important to them, so, so it's a.
Yeah, and that's, and I won't waste our time here, because I already voiced my opinion on it.
You did, yeah, no, I mean, they, I mean, that was the, the vote was, I have to, you know, you were the lone vote.
I was, no, I was alone because I don't feel our opinions should be any different than Kate filling out the survey or, you know, Patrick filling out the survey. I think it should all be handled equally, I don't think, I think we are there to steer, but we're not there to. Project our own ideas, so that's why.
This is, this is not going into the, the comments, you know, this is a totally separate thing, but, but at the end of the day, the committee will be charged to frame our recommendations on, on, you know, what do we recommend for actions? You know, what do we, how do we order them, what are, what are the important ones? So it'll be our, our duty to take all that input we heard and then, and then put it into actionable steps that, that the town can really do. And, and there will be, you know, our judgment and our, you know, we're, we're there, that's our, our goal, is to, is to bring our own knowledge of the town, that we're, you know, the, the, the boards or the, the areas of interest that we represent. And to, and to take all that input and, and make sure that we really can, can do something to fulfill the vision that, that, you know, people have. So, so we will be doing, we will be doing that, and that's, and by the way, the Barrett, the Barrett group are giving us, they will be recommending things to us. But at the end of the day, it will be our, our decision, our vote on what we, what we do and we're, you know, we're all be working together on that.
Phil, just real quick, you said July eighth and August thirty-first, can you just tell me what those two are?
Yeah, so in first, I just want to say this is all tentative too.
Okay, but the April twenty-seventh is pretty set?
Yeah, so, so. Yeah, so the, the, right now, the, the big, the big meeting coming up will be April twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Will be public comments.
Yep.
Our committee will be meeting the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-second or twenty-seventh?
The twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
April twenty-seventh. We will be, we will be having a public hearing, if you will, or, or having a, a public meeting to take comments.
Okay.
And before that, we will be publishing the, the document.
Right.
You know, and that, and they, so, so when we get our comments, when we give our comments back to, 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 you know, Barrett Consulting, they will then update the document. Or if they don't update it, they will tell us why they decided it wasn't, you know, something that should be changed. So, so they, they have a very, very nice form, there, there's, you know, nothing can be done without accounting for what happened to it.
Yeah.
You know, there was why it didn't get either, either actioned out or, or it wasn't, and we can, you know, discuss that. The next, the next big meeting, or the next big event will be the draft action plan on July eighth.
Okay, all right, and then?
And that, and that'll be coming to the committee, you know, to the, to the, and then there, there will be the draft, the draft master plan. I'm sorry, the, the draft master plan is on August thirty-first.
Okay.
Yeah, there, there's an action plan July eighth, but again, internally within the committee.
Okay.
The draft master plan, August thirty-first.
Okay.
And then that will be presented to the public. Another hearing on September fifteenth.
Thereabouts, okay.
Yeah, so, so we, we, and I can talk to you later about Katie, we, we, we did, we were going to do a special meeting and then we changed the date for the public hearing.
Oh, no, I was aware of that.
And that, yeah, you were aware of that, so that freed up the March date to do the, to do the, the special meeting, yeah.
All set? Okay, well done, nothing lost on the agenda, so make a motion to adjourn. Wait a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are done.